Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the October 27th City Council Work Session. Welcome to everyone here and those at home. We have a great session today on the update on the Transportation System Plan and Pedestrian and Bicycle Master Plan, so we'll get going with that. City Manager?
Thanks, and I'll invite a couple of staff members up, and I'll give it over to Kurt to get us started.
Welcome, Kurt.
Thank you.
Well, we're excited to be here to provide an update on a couple of important transportation projects that we've got going. It's in two parts, should be about 15, 20 minutes for -- to cover both from the staff presentations, and there's no action required, but we really look forward to your comments and questions on it. I'll first cover the Transportation System Plan, which is a citywide, long-range, comprehensive planning effort, and then David Roth, loading things up on the computer, will talk about the pedestrian bicycle master plan.
I don't have to move yet, right?
Pardon?
You're not doing the -- not yet.
And in fact, it's just, if you want graphics, ask, and we'll pop them up. We're not going to do a PowerPoint.
Okay.
So, the Transportation System Plan is like TransPlan, but it'll be just for the City of Eugene, co-adopted probably with us and Lane County, depending on the structure. Like TransPlan, it will have local policies and project lists. It will -- it's sort of the other side of the coin for the Envision Eugene effort, so that's the growth and the physical development of the city. The Transportation System Plan, which is also known as the TSP, covers how the new people and jobs will get around, what the mobility needs. Will address automotive, mobility and safety, pedestrian and bicycle needs, public transit, freight movement, passenger and freight rail, and air transportation, so many topics. We've been calling this in-house of the update of TransPlan, because the more we dive into it, we realize that TransPlan really provided a great foundation for our future. We've been recognized nationally for Bus Rapid Transit System. The nodal development or walkable neighborhoods concepts really came forward in TransPlan, as well as giving us the policy framework that's resulted in us being a nationally-recognized bicycle-friendly community. So, many of those policies, we think, set us on a real good framework for whatever the future throws at us. We do recognize, though there are emerging issues, that TransPlan did not address originally, and we've been working with Metropolitan Policy Committee on some of these. These include greenhouse gases and the climate change, availability and pricing of fuels for automobiles and freight, higher densities along transit corridors, and this community's acceptance of more congestion along those corridors. So, those and other emerging issues we'll be wrestling with through this TransPlan alignment or the update. Timing is excellent. The planets have aligned. I've been a city planner for 30 years, and I've never seen so many land use and transportation plans being updated at the same time. So, in addition to Envision Eugene, City of Eugene's doing the Pedestrian Bicycle Master Plan. Their Lane Transit District is creating a long-range transit plan. ElCog is working with our metropolitan partners and Coburg on a regional transportation plan. There's a Regional Transportation Options Plan, which is demand management, trying to steer people towards other options besides single occupant vehicles. City of Springfield is also going through the same process with its land use and transportation planning, and we've just had the recent adoption of the Airport Master Plan. In addition to those sort of formal planning efforts, there's also studies going on for the Belt Line Highway Facility Plan, excuse me. The MX Planning that's going on by LTD in the city, recently completed Eugene Climate and Energy Action Plan, and the recommendations that came out of the West Eugene Collaborative Studies. So, each of those projects has had its own public participation component, too. So, the public participation and the policies that will be coming out of those plans will be weaving together into the Eugene Transportation System Plan. So, and some of those, for instance, the policies and recommended projects that will come from the Ped and Bike Master Plan, the Transportation Option Plans, and the Airport Master Plan, we hope can pretty well be plugged into the citywide plan. So, we're hoping that work fits directly into the citywide plan. Transportation System Plan will be done in two phases. So, Phase One, which is what we're in now, the main goal is to identify a viable preferred land use and transportation alternative. So, we're hoping that meshes with the Envision Eugene growth and transportation plans together. Phase One will evaluate the existing conditions, review current policies, and coordinate with Envision Eugene's land use analysis. We'll be dealing with the emerging issues that we already discussed. Funding is therefore up to four transportation system alternatives to be studied, so more emphasis on bikes and pads or more on transit. We can test different scenarios, up to four. We will be back to get council direction and update you on our progress, so with regard to the -- just how everything's weaving together, and appreciate those opportunities. Phase One is projected not to last longer than to the end of calendar year 2011, although we're trying to be flexible and work as much as possible with the Envision Eugene process to help inform and come to a implementable Envision Eugene scenario that comes to you in February. What we've been doing so far is updating the regional traffic model. ODOT-funded, new traffic counts at 50 sample intersections around the city, so that's been done, the analysis being done. We just received the traffic constraints analysis from our consultants, and that's being fed into the Envision Eugene process. And we're creating an integrated regional transportation issues website, and we'll have interactive maps that the public can comment on and provide information through that. If someone has an interest or goes in through Lane Transit District's website, you'll weave, they can also find out what the Cities of Eugene and Springfield are doing and the regional level, so everything will be merged together, and we think it'll be a great system for providing information to the general public and aid the discussion about what options we'll be exploring. Phase Two will take the conceptually viable preferred alternative and then work through more detailed analysis about what projects, construction-type projects, would be needed to our transportation system or funding priorities to actually make that system work. Phase One has been funded by the Oregon Department of Transportation, so we very much appreciate that. They provided a contract team. The primary consultant is CH2M Hill out of the Portland office. They are also the consultant team that's working with Springfield, with ElCog on the regional transportation model, with Lane Transit District on their long-range transit plan, and through a separate contract for our Bike-Ped Master Plan. So, same data, same graphics, same website coordination, and it'll help us weave everything together. So, what they hear in Springfield, they can bring to our meetings and help very much. So, that concludes my brief overview on the long-range project. As you know, in Eugene, the pedestrian and bicycle network's critical in our transportation planning, and the master plan for that is a little bit further along than the citywide plan that I just described, and starting to show some promising results. David Roth is the manager of that project, and he's here to dive down to that level of detail.
Thanks, Kurt. So, yes, my name's David Roth, and I'm a transportation planner here in Eugene. Good afternoon, councilors and mayor. So, I'm here to give you a bit of an update on the Pedestrian and Bicycle Master Plan, and before I jump into the update, I want to give a little background on where we started from. Back in 2006, we initiated a new dialogue with the community on walking and biking issues, and I'm sure some of you are familiar with what we began back then in the fall of '06. That dialogue lasted about 16 months or so, and what we ended up with at the end of that process was Eugene's Pedestrian and Bicycle Strategic Plan. The Strategic Plan set out a vision for the community for walking and biking, and I'll read this quickly. It says that Eugene is a place where walking and biking are integral to the community's culture, where the city's livability, sustainability, and overall quality of life are enhanced by more people walking and biking, and where these activities are safe, convenient, and practical options for everyone. So, to start on the path to reach this vision, the Strategic Plan laid out over 80 action items that could be taken by individual community members, various organizations within the community, city staff, or Eugene's Bicycle-Pedestrian Advisory Committee. To date, many of these actions have already been completed, and many others are underway right now. So, where does that leave us today? Well, the city still needs a plan that describes the types of pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure and policies to guide transportation decision-making for the foreseeable future, and that's where we are today with the Pedestrian and Bicycle Master Plan. So, for the master plan, the goals and objectives really were built off of the vision that I just described, as well as being derived from existing and adopted policy documents, including TransPlan, the Climate and Energy Action Plan, Metro Plan, arterial collector street plan, and Central Area Transportation Study, to name a few. So, I'm going to go over some of these goals. So, the overall goal of the master plan is to increase the share of trips Eugene residents make by walking and biking for transportation and recreation by making it convenient and comfortable for people. We're going to expand the network of Eugene's bikeway and pedestrian system, ensure that pedestrians and bicyclists are safe out there on the roads, create accessible, efficient, and convenient methods for pets and bikes to travel to the places they live, work, and play, foster community culture supportive, walking and biking as important modes of transportation, recreation, and so on. I won't go through all of these right now, but basically, they're in line with existing policies around walking and biking for the community. So, in terms of the timeline and specific plan elements, we kicked off the process in June of 2010, and we've broken the project into five phases. The first phase really is in the identifying needs part of the project, and this is providing the foundation of the existing conditions report, so we needed a baseline of understanding of where we were today. The second phase is developing a best practices and design toolkit for the city to use. We're in a pretty exciting time for pedestrian and bicycle engineering and design in terms of all of these new design treatments that are being approved at the national level and are starting to be implemented all over the country, and we need some policy guidance and practice guidance to start implementing those tools here in Eugene. The third phase is defining the ped and bike network. So, what capital projects are needed to complete the system, and that really is an emphasis of this project. We have a great existing system, and we're well aware of that, but how can we make it better by providing better connections to -- between neighborhoods and our shared-use path system, for example? The fourth phase is implementation of the plan, and we'll be getting to that in the spring of next year, spring, summer of next year, and then finally, adoption of the plan. And ultimately, once we're finished with these phases in summer of 2011, they will form the basis for the ped and bike modal chapter of the Transportation System Plan, which you just heard about from Kurt. So, I'm going to cover outreach and public involvement. What we did initially for the planning process is we formed two advisory committees. We have a project advisory committee made up of local residents, individuals who represent different organizations, the accessibility committee, those sorts of representatives, and I'm happy to say we have Hugh Pritchard here, who is on our project advisory committee today. We also have a technical advisory committee that's advising us more on the technical details of this project, which is largely made up of city staff throughout the organization, as well as Lane Transit District, the school districts, University of Oregon, and so forth. Our outreach strategy, really, what we wanted to do was consolidate all of the existing input that we had. So, that was a major work task that took quite a bit of time, but we consolidated all of the existing input that we've collected since we began the process for the Strategic Plan several years back. We used that as a starting point. We developed a project website, which is coordinated with the TSP website. We went out to several neighborhoods, met with representatives from neighborhoods. We developed a survey tool for the neighborhoods' associations. The project website had a new tool, it was pretty exciting to use, which was an interactive mapping tool, which received over 600 individual inputs during a month-long period at the end of the summer. The website also had an online comment forum, which received over 200 comments at the same period, and an online survey with over 180 surveys completed. We're also working with the Bicycle-Pedestrian Advisory Committee, providing them monthly updates at their meetings, and we have a series of open houses, of which we had the first one on October 14th with between 70 and 80 participants. It was a great event, and we were able to get a lot of information out to the public of where we were at. And finally, we held the Transportation Remix Event. I'm not sure if anyone heard about that, but that was last Friday at the Oregon Electric Station. It was a fun event, talking about some of these new design tools that we might start to see here being implemented. So, next steps right now for us, the big part of this project is starting to flesh out what the network will look like in the future, and that's what we're doing right now and what we'll be working on over the next couple of months, is identifying corridors improvement, identifying gaps that could be completed with some kind of crossing and so forth. So, we'll have one more public open house in the spring, in March, and then we will, if we stay on schedule, we should wrap this up in June of 2011.
Ready for conversation now?
Certainly.
So, thank you both very much, and I just want to say before I call, and Mike here, that I just think that this planning, immense planning period we're in is a huge opportunity. It's a huge challenge and a huge opportunity at the same time, but it really is a way for us to bring all these different plans together for the future of this community. And what that makes me think of is how important it is that we kind of have an iterative conversation with the public about it, so they understand what we're building with all of this and understand the opportunities for them to participate in that, and how we do that in a way that's public enough that people get what it is we're doing and can take place, take part in it over time, I think is a real challenge, but I think it's an important thing for us to do. And I know we've built in things, but there is something about how you get it out into the press or in other places so that people really kind of get what it is that those opportunities are and how they can participate in them. And I just want to express, I think, on the part of all of us, our appreciation for all the folks who've been involved, the community members who've been involved in this. We're really fortunate to have the amount of participation we have, and I did want to just mention that, I think you probably know this, but I'll just mention it, that VPAC, some of those folks are worried about their ability to not only provide advice in terms of the things they're asked to provide advice for, but where the opportunities are for them to bring other ideas to the table, and I just wanted to let you know that and hope that you'll work with them so that they can give advice on the things they're asked to, but also be able to get their other ideas into the mix as well. Mike, you're next.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, gentlemen, very much for the work, and it's very detailed. It's greatly appreciated. I notice here that the draft alternatives and evaluation memo comes out just essentially as we finish the major decisions around Envision Eugene and new UGP. So, it seems like this is a sequential process rather than a parallel one. Is that intentional?
No, the process is intended to be iterative, and to date, it's been more just a function of getting, waiting to line up the ODOT funding for the transportation planning and things. What has been happening in the meantime is, we didn't have formal studies on where the congestion was, but transportation engineers and the people that review development applications from public works have been feeding information to the staff behind Envision Eugene about these areas.
Which is all in us.
Which street segments are congested, and what we're finding, as you might imagine, the areas that have currently the most activity, where there is a commercial activity and more residential development, what the Envision Eugene groups are calling the hotspots, where there seems to be more economic activity happening, are also where there's traffic congestion. So, what we will be wrestling with is if that's where we want to put more residents because they'll be close to the employment and services that they desire, we can expect even more traffic congestion in those areas. So, what trade-offs, what can we do to improve the traffic situation, and then what other trade-offs might we have to look at and agree to for the Envision Eugene?
Well, that's really kind of my point, is that as we're going through the Envision Eugene process, we're going to plan for where things go. We're going to plan for where we want things to go. We're going to take up with the nodal development stuff that we, that LCDC's going to, I suppose, come back to us with at some point. When are they coming back to us on the review of what we planned before?
I think it's March is when the report back to LCDC says.
Okay. So, they'll give us a sense of how we did before and what we have yet to do. We'll know where we want things to go with Envision Eugene. My hope or my concern, I guess, would be that we don't then use the transportation planning to limit ourselves in actually accomplishing the things that we put forward in Envision Eugene. And what I mean by that is, I expect that what we won't have is a look at where we can expect congestion. I expect that what we'll have is a plan for capacity. We'll have a plan for how do we deal with, to get to the capacity we need to accomplish our objective with Envision Eugene. And when I see the part here, and I may need a second round, but I'll, we'll find out, where you have the developing evaluation criteria, I see that part kind of just starting now on the timeline. And I have three questions around that, one we just addressed, but secondly, you mentioned that our TransPlan is a statewide leader in the kind of planning that we do, and I think that's great. One of the tools that we apply in a lot of the different plans that we create around transportation is using vehicle miles traveled, or VMT, as a metric for what we should or shouldn't be doing. And as you know, from the meeting we had the other day, Sonny Chikering and Savannah, all both from ODOT, said that that was at best a crude instrument for trying to find what they're looking for around environmental questions. And they're developing a tool at the state level, so my question is, are we going to lead and create a new metric ourselves, or are we going to wait for ODOT to give it to us?
Well, we led with TransPlan. As I understand it, we were the first metropolitan region in the state to propose alternative mobility standards to the VMT standard with TransPlan. We've learned a lot from that, and we won't know if we will meet the VMT standards, or there's a possibility we may under a new plan, or propose a new or modified set of alternative mobility standards, saying this is what's for.
But we're still using the standard of VMT as the measuring stick. I'm saying, are we going to find a new measuring stick?
It is on the books as a requirement of our Transportation System Plan by the Transportation Planning Rule.
So, ODOT's going to come up with a new one, and we're going to wait for them?
I doubt that ODOT's new standard will be in place by the time we would hope to adopt a new Transportation System Plan.
Lastly, and I only have 25 seconds here, so I may need a second round. One of the things we talked about in the Belt Line New Facility Plan Steering Committee meetings was the issue of volume versus capacity in that facility, several intersections of which ODOT classifies as a failed facility because their standard, and I'm going to run out of time, I'll get back to it in a second round.
All right, I got you there.
Thank you.
George Brown.
Thank you. Thanks, Kurt and David. Thank you for the presentation. I just am wondering about some of this information, if we can get a hold of it. The existing conditions memo, the final existing conditions memo, is that online somewhere?
It doesn't exist yet.
I thought it was going to be done here. I mean, I'm just looking at the timeline.
Right. We got a draft that did not have much of a traffic analysis in it. It was just sort of layout of the city and general mode splits and whatnot. Traffic analysis is just freshly in and draft form. It's being reviewed by our engineers and should be available soon.
All right.
And it will be online when it's available.
Okay, so that'll probably push the future conditions memo up a little bit, too, and then the final, these will probably all get.
Pushed in, but we're still trying to hold the outer end.
Okay, all right. And then you said that the ODOT has completed their traffic count of the 50 intersections?
Yes.
Is that available to see?
We can make it available. That is part of the existing conditions draft report.
Oh, I see, okay. Well, if you could, if I could have a copy of that, or, I mean, probably the best thing would be online, but.
We'll see if I can get it. We have a new website, eugene-tsp.com, or .org will get you there. I'll try to have that posted, and I'll let council know when that's on there.
Okay. I'd like to see that because that ties in with several other discussions. That'd be great. Thank you.
Alan, you're next, and then Andrew.
You want to go first?
No, that's okay, Alan. You blocked me pretty good.
We're not meeting our VMT standards. We haven't in the past, we're not currently now, and we're not going to in the near future, right?
We were not, with TransPlan, we were not projected to meet the VMT reductions, goals set by the state.
Five percent reduction.
Reduction of the projected.
Why did you say we might with the new plan? What's going to change?
There's been some discussions, no analysis, but generally, vehicle miles traveled, or VMT, has been dropping nationally, and there hasn't been a, to my knowledge, a succinct measurement of, say, in Eugene or whatnot. So, there's a new survey was done recently to find out driving habits in Eugene-Springfield metropolitan area.
Right.
I haven't seen those results, but it's possible that our driving habits may be different than what the statewide or based on Portland Metro that the old TransPlan was using as an estimate. There may be things, ridership on LTDs up, price of gas, things may have changed. There's a possibility that we'd meet a target. Now, whether that could be projected into, you know, 20 years, more people, and all, what the overall effect would be, I don't know.
You expect LCD, LCBC to stay with that metric? And that goal? Since I don't think anybody's even come close to me yet, have they?
No, not to my knowledge, no. Our conversations with the staff at the LCD and some presentations with the Land Conservation Development Commission, we've suggested that perhaps they not keep the VMT measurement if, because they're also preparing greenhouse gas targets and whatnot, and we don't know how those will mesh, or, you know, if we're trying to meet two masters or two different goals. My sense from those conversations is the VMT's probably going to stay. We'll probably have two different goals to meet, or metrics to meet for different purposes, and the state staff's thinking now is that the VMT, yeah, it's very crude, it's very rough, but it's probably a fair measurement of how we are reducing greenhouse gas also just because, from light vehicle emissions.
And it, parallel is the state process out of Senate Bill 1059, which will create the targets for transportation in the industry.
And we don't expect those targets to be done.
David, good report. In the, on the timeline here, we have the draft toolbox and the final toolbox. Can you explain the toolbox a little bit more? Give me some examples and what you expect to be able to have in the toolbox?
Yeah, it's a great question. So, let's see, last Friday, actually, on, on October 25th, we held a design workshop with the consultant team and quite a few city staff, as well as, we had some staff people from Salem, Springfield at this meeting. And what we did is we went through a number of new design tools and just some examples that all throughout include a tool called a shared lane marking, or SHRO. We do have one installation of those in Eugene on East 33rd. It's a tool that a lot of cities are using now to complete gaps in the network where you, for bicyclists, where you might not be able to fit a bike lane in, or on a street where you want to show bicyclists where they should be positioning themselves in a shared lane situation. So that's one example of a tool. Another example of a tool that we discussed and will be looking at for the design toolkit is one that you may have heard of that was just implemented in Springfield as part of the Gateway MX extension, and that's a hawk signal for pedestrians. And basically what that is, is a new type of signal that remains dark unless it's activated by a pedestrian and you have red flashing lights that indicate a stop situation for a motorist. And they have two of these signals now in Springfield. And, and that's just an example of a new tool. Well, no, it's not the roundabout, actually. You have one on Harlow and one on Gateway by the post office.
Okay.
Harlow by Les Schwab, sort of. It's worthwhile going to check those out if you haven't seen them yet. But those are the sorts of tools that we, we didn't have 10 years ago, but they're available now for our use. We just have to determine when and where we'll be using those in Eugene.
So we set the standard, we create the toolbox, set the standard, and then use the things in the toolbox to help us meet the standards?
That's right.
So all these different ideas that you were just talking about that are in the toolbox are things that we can use at different quantities to be able to meet our standards?
Yeah, and really what it comes down to is, is looking at how we want to build out the system and complete those missing connections and whatnot. And there's a number of different tools that we have available to us now that we can use to complete that system.
Do we have a numeric metric about this increase in pedestrian or bicycle use that will be in this plan?
You know, that, that is a question that's actually come up from our project advisory committee is, do we want to assign a specific modal target for pets and bikes based on existing conditions? And our thinking right now is that we, it's difficult to assign a specific modal target with this, the Ped Bike Master Plan alone, and it makes more sense to do that in coordination with the TSP project where we do get into those conversations, looking at all the different modes. But the metric that's sort of the standard that we use is the commute to work trips. And Eugene is actually one of the highest in the nation. If not, it is the, it's the highest for our community size for the last round of data that came out for bicycle use anyway. We had 10.8% of our population commuting to work by bike as a primary mode.
And beat up, beat out that city to the north.
Yeah, we consistently beat the city to the north, yeah.
Yeah, who's Haley?
The big.
That's great that we have the highest bicycle commuters in the state. Kurt, so when we get to the TSP, how does the, how did the numerical mode splits play? And how do we set those?
What you should think about in the meantime, as I am now, as the issue keeps coming up, of what the purpose of the targets would be. So in my, where I am now, my thinking is, it's one thing to set targets and say, gee, if, if we could achieve 20% bicycle commuting, you know, what would it take to be there? And how, how might we need to improve the system to accommodate that? Like, are there constraints now that are keeping people from doing that? And so that's one thing. Same with transit or some of the others. I think we went into problems if those additional, what we call alternative modes, numbers increase are at the expense of another mode. So if we get to the point of saying, we'll increase bikes, ped, transit, that's our goal, or we will expect that. And then the next question, I think, is will we do something that discourages automobile travel, for instance? And that's a huge policy question. So I think there's, you know, to have targets, to have goals, to say, gee, if we did these things, we could accommodate X percent bikes and 50% more transit ridership. And those things may be desired to meet our climate and energy action plan goals also. And pedestrian with, merging with the 20-minute neighborhoods and saying, you know, it's often called the trips not taken, that you need not do anything besides walk or stroll to a store for some trips. Those things considered, but then to reduce vehicle emissions, will we be doing other things to persuade people to move to other modes?
Shift to other modes.
And, you know, that's a large question. It's just, am I projecting ahead on how the issues may play out? That's, I flag it for myself, and I think will be, that will be a community discussion on, during the next year.
Yeah. I like trips not taken, it sounds like a Grateful Dead song.
Robert Frost.
Long strange trips.
Robert Frost plays for the dead, is that it?
Robert Frost, yeah. He wrote for the dead.
Are you finished, Alan?
Yes.
Andrea's next, but I wanted to say that one of the things maybe that indicates a lowered VMT is actually the story of the state gas tax, that the trips have been reduced so much, they're getting in so much less gas tax, that it's been, becomes increasingly hard to fund a transportation system. So that's, that's an indicator all, all in itself. And the other thing I want to say is that, what's the name of the main speaker we had at Rail Evolution, who's from British Columbia, Gordon?
Price.
Price. One of the things he always, he said has been so successful in Vancouver is positioning this not as one form of transportation against the other, but that you have real choice for everybody. And when you have real choice, good, real choice for everybody, more and more people will make the choices that you would like them to make. So it's, it is really definitely on the carrot, on the carrot side.
Right. And along those lines, if, if we provide great choice and a variety of choices, then do we need the targets, the metrics per mode? We can measure it over time, but do we set those ahead?
Okay, Andrea?
Thank you, Mayor. So Kurt and David, good presentation, thank you. So I didn't hear anybody mention Lane County, and I'm curious where they're at. Are they a part of this conversation? Do you have representative or staff? Or is that a given? And I'm just not aware.
I guess I could start really quick. Our technical advisory committee for the Ped Bike Master Plan has a position with a county rep on it. They had some staff changes over there, so we should be having this person participating now.
Okay. Do you have any residents from Lane County? Us? I mean, they're not in the city.
Not on our, not on our Ped and Bike Advisory Committee.
Okay, well, that kind of, so Mike and I share an area that is not incorporated. You know, we're talking about people that live inside the UGB but aren't city residents. And I just want to make sure that we're, that we're, when we're talking about these things, I'm glad to hear there's going to be somebody on the county, that there's connectivity, because there's a lot of people out in the River Road area and in the Santa Clara area that would, they take advantage of the bike path that comes along the river. But I know that there's always been a desire, you know, to have their streets more incorporated into this, and so I would hope that, you know, that we don't forget them. And the other question I had was, those crossings are really cool. I just happened to go down the one on Harlow Road, and it, who paid for those? Was that part of the EMX build-out?
It was funded through the MX, yeah.
I don't know, you guys should take a trip down there. I mean, for all these roads that we have, like Highway 99 is a perfect one, you know, there, people cross all the time, and those would be perfect. I mean, just an opportunity for people to cross safely, you know, to get traffic to slow down. And, I mean, I'm sure there's other roads, but I just think of Highway 99 because it's definitely a, it's a challenge. So, thank you.
Can I get my cue?
Oh, sure. Why don't you go right ahead, right now?
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation, Kurt. I, earlier this year, I testified before the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee regarding the need for greater, more and more safer passage for bikers on the west side of the railroad tracks, to get to the other side and therefore get downtown easier. And I was told that, that my comments were received well from the group, but how do I follow that? I mean, did I get any traction? Where is that? And how can I track whether or not that has become a part of the, the plan?
And for me to be clear, this is Kurt. You're concerned about getting over the main, or around the, or under the, the main railroad tracks that, that split Eugene east to west?
Right.
Or is it a specific spot?
I can only cross at Maxwell Road and over at Roosevelt. Those are the only two passing. And one of them is terribly unsafe.
I would say pop the phone, just looking over there.
A couple different avenues, and they should weave together by the end of this process. So the connectivity and the where there's gaps in our system is being addressed through the Bicycle Pedestrian Master Plan currently. We've identified that it's just a state of affairs, kind of an existing condition in Eugene between the railroad system and the river, that Eugene is really split. It makes it very hard to have the, the grid network for the options that, that we would otherwise look to. In the transportation system plan, we have a technical advisory committee that has a representative from Union Pacific and several ODOT rail staff on. So I know this will be an issue that will be addressed. I don't know, I don't have solutions yet to offer, or what the price tag on, say, bridging over the rail yard as we've done over Delta Highway and I-5 would be.
Anything else, Jennifer?
Well, yeah, so I, so you can't tell me then if my request is in the queue? Or is it just, did I just kind of throw it out there and it's fixed, or did it stick?
Well, David will speak to that for the request that's already come in, but consider it stuck with the, with me, with the transportation system plan.
So Jennifer, I was at the BPAC meeting where you attended and, and heard that comment come in loud and clear, and we, that is a comment that stuck, and it's, it's resonated with the community. So in the outreach that we've done so far for the Ped Bike Master Plan, that area between Roosevelt and Maxwell has come up several times, and we are, we actually have already taken some field visits out there to look at potential areas where there may be a crossing. So it did receive, it did get traction. It is being looked at right now as we're going into the network development phase of the Ped Bike Master Plan. And the best way to track that would be just to stay plugged in over the next couple of months. The easiest way to do that is through the project website. We also have an interested parties list, and, and I think you will likely see some kind of a recommendation for some sort of crossing there. It's a little too early to say what that would look like, but, or where exactly it would be, but just to reassure you, it did get traction.
Excellent, thank you, I appreciate your answer.
Betty? Thank you. First, I have a question. There was a conference on walkability at Tsunamie Bookstore in the spring of '04. A lot of community people were there, and I think some people from Canada were there. We've got lots of experts in Canada, by the way, it seems. So what happened to the recommendations from that? I didn't, it was, people spent a day there, and there were some good ideas, and then I didn't hear anything.
So for the Ped and Bike Master Plan, we actually took that report, it was a walkable communities report, I think, done by, oh, I can't remember the, the person's name right now, but he is a pedestrian expert. And that was one of our background documents that we used to start with for the baseline data for the Ped and Bike Master Plan. And specifically, I was looking at the Willamette Street corridor and how to.
That's the one we were concentrating on that day. And it's been so long, and nothing has happened.
Well, I can speak a little bit more. We, the city had applied for a grant to do some implementation work and take those concepts, and it was Dan Burden who had come, at that time he was, I believe, based in Florida, had come, and tried to do them. We did not, we didn't get the grant, we weren't successful. That corridor is also being studied right now as one of the pilot projects for opportunity siting and to fit into the Envision Eugene. And so we've been discussing co-authoring a grant through Transportation Growth Management. Next round's coming up, be doing a pre-app in December and formal application in March to take another look at that. They call it, now we call it a road diet, it was reducing the number of lanes, but actually making it easier for pedestrian bicycles to enter that street.
Now, one good thing did happen on Willamette, that stoplight at 25th. I don't know if that came out of that or not, but it is possible now to.
I think it did.
Shop on both sides of the street without getting in your cars, or getting killed. Comments, I think choices are really important. If you give people choices, they're more likely to do things. I think that's more important than saying you can't do something else. Example that I brought up before is when you put up plastic bags for dog waste, people use them if they're not there, and garbage cans, if they're not there, they don't, they just let it lie. I think, some things I think that would make things better are doing something about bicycle theft. It's really hard to feel good about riding a bike if you think it may disappear when you leave it, which happens a lot in this city, as I'm sure you know. Has there been any thought about widening the bike lanes on streets like 11th and 18th? I don't know how you could, but if you're, if you're riding and a bus comes by, it's really scary. And I don't know what could be done about that, but has anyone talked about that?
We are talking about some different types of bike lane treatments within the design toolkit that I talked about earlier, to provide extra buffer space between traffic and.
Yeah, that would be good. Actually, the very best thing is bike lanes where the cars aren't anywhere around, but some time ago, Ken Saxon started up a system in some areas of flags to cross streets. This has to do with pedestrian safety. And I still, there's still some down by Parker School, no, no flags, but the, the slots are there. I wonder if anyone's thinking about that? If you feel safe crossing the street, and some, I've been, been in other cities where they're used to. If you don't, if everyone doesn't know what I'm talking about, you pick up a flag on one side of the street, and you walk across carrying the flag and put it in the slot on the other side. And it's a signal for cars to stop. And then there, presumably there would always be flags on both sides. And that should be at a crosswalk or a corner or something, but they are used in some cities, and they were used at a few crossings here for a little while. And I think that's a good way, again, it's in the area of choice, if they have a choice to be safe. And then my old, old thing, if you had dogs on buses, if they were allowed, some people wouldn't have to drive somewhere to take their dog somewhere. And I've known of people who actually would not have replaced their cars if they, I see it, if they could take their dogs on the bus. And you could give a reaction to that, even though I'm out of time.
It was.
Are you discussing any of those things?
Well, so the, the flags in particular has been used in Eugene, and that's an example of a low-cost sort of thing that we could implement here, working with schools, maybe. And then I have no comment on dogs on buses.
Thank you.
I'll forward it to my colleagues at Lane Transit District.
Thank you.
So we're going to wrap up this discussion. Mike, you want to get yours in, and then we'll close down this discussion.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I, I want to say that I agree with the mayor and part of what Betty said in the, in the idea that our best outcome is to, I think, to provide multiple choices to people and allow them the freedom to choose. I think that's the best outcome and wonderful. My concern is that that's not what we're doing when we plan, and the discussions we're having are not to do that. What I just heard you say in reply to Alan's was the discussion of using other means to try and persuade people to, to.
The choice.
To, to trans, to, to choose different transportation means. And my problem with VMT is this, we all have the goal, for whatever reason one of us might have it, to try to reduce. To, to, to choose different transportation means. And my problem with VMT is this, we all have the goal, for whatever reason, one of us might have it, to try to reduce emissions. And when we use that as the metric and the standard and we say, okay, if we can plan to do things to force people to do different, make different choices and reduce the number of vehicle miles they travel, we can affect that. The problem is when we use that metric, that VMT metric, and say we want to reduce VMT, then we plan for less capacity in our choices when we're planning for some transportation facility. And in doing so, we don't actually force people to make different choices. They're still free to make the choices they're going to. And in many cases, the only thing we actually end up doing is increasing congestion. And when we do that, the reality of what we get is people driving the same number of miles, but doing it more slowly and we end up with more emissions than we started with. And so my problem with VMT is that it's a terrible metric for trying to get the outcome we're looking for, which is fewer emissions. My challenge is that we're planning for this sort of thing right now when we're talking about the level of infill that we want around Envision Eugene, and I think that's a good thing. We want to plan to build more densely, but when the Belt Line is a failed facility at multiple places, that means if we're going to infill and build more housing within certain areas around, say, Delta and Belt Line, where we already know that the state standard is 75% or 80% volume to capacity and it's at 94 there, then we know that's failed in the plans that we're making. There's only one of the several plans on the table that even come close to addressing that standard. And when I asked the ODOT folks, okay, well, how can we be choosing anything but that which not only gets us to meet the current standard, but in our future planning for more dense living, we'll meet the standard at that point? And their answer was, I guess we're going to have to change the standard. So that says we're all going to have to get used to more congestion because we're not planning to address appropriate capacity. And that's my concern when we're using the standard.
Welcome.
Mayor, I know you're trying to close, but I wanted to make real clear, I did not mean to imply that we are now planning to persuade people or preclude them from driving. I was responding in a hypothetical about what the potential purposes of having load split metrics were. And, you know, it's like, it sounds good, but they may be different.
I understand what you mean. My comment is the effect of that manner of planning, I think, is my opinion, has the effect of creating less capacity and I don't think it actually accomplishes our goals.
And I would just wrap that up by saying those are points of view held by different councilors. And so in the end, the direction that you take is what comes from us, whether we use a carrot or a stick or a combination of both. That is what comes from the majority of this body whenever they make that decision. And so each person here would have a perspective on that. And, yes.
And what I would just say is, and that's why I would just reiterate what Kurt was saying is, this is a great time to have these conversations because so many things are coming together. And I think what he's acknowledging is those conversations will be coming back to this body, so we just need to be.
And the other one little thing I would add is that within the Envision Eugene conversation, because I know it was brought up and it didn't get responded to, we actually do have a fairly significant number of River Road Santa Clara folks participating in that discussion.
Outside, yeah.
Okay, we're going to move on now. Thank you very much for the presentation. And we're going to go to the second item, which is public process and see how much of that we can get done within the next 35 minutes.
All right, Kelly.
I think you'll be able to get a lot done.
Okay.
Beth Forrest and I are here to listen and provide some information as a recap from your process session in August. And we thought it'd be most helpful if you picked up where you left off. And so if you look at your packet on page 107 at the bottom, start with three items, two of which are highlighted on the bottom of the page as the three items remaining to tie up. One is request for contingency funds, then work session polls, and then committee reports. And we thought we'd just step through those one by one if that's acceptable to you. And on request for contingency funds, in your last session, you asked for proposed language that would provide more restrictions about how those contingency funds would be spent. And so on page 113, what staff has put together, we worked with finance staff. And on page 113, we have your existing practice around contingency funds and then some proposed language changes for those criteria, along with some examples to illustrate what those strengthened or more restrictive criteria might look like. And so we just opened it up to see if this meets what you were seeking.
So right now, if you look on page 113 and see the proposed criteria, they need some feedback from you about that. You like it, you don't like it, you don't care, whatever. Alan and then Betty and then Chris.
I'm fine with the added language. I think it adds a little bit more clarity. I like the examples part, so you can kind of get a sense of, that's going to stay in there, right? That's not just for this text, it's for the policy document. Okay. Good. I'm good with it.
Okay. Alan's good with it. Betty, how about you?
Good. It's an improvement. Thank you.
Chris, how about you?
They both said it. I think you've done good work with it. I do, I also like examples. I think it helps clarify a lot.
Couldn't come up with one for the last one, huh?
George polling?
Same as what they're saying. Please leave the examples in there.
Andrea, there, we're looking at the proposed criteria for the contingency funds on page 113. And four people have spoken and said they think they're good. And I know you had expressed you might have some concerns.
Well, I just, so, I guess I don't have as many concerns as I thought because it's pretty much, pretty much the same as I see when I review it, except for that you're giving examples.
Orange is new.
Is orange is different, well, but that's, the examples that are given are different, I mean, are within what, are within what we've done in the past. Can you tell me what's different between now and what we've done in the past? I guess would be my question. I mean, how would you see these as different?
Well, I think the main difference probably in addition to providing examples to help provide clarity is C. And so if we look at C and the existing practice, a situation which arises as a result of specific directives, and then C is revived, as revised, also adds language about, you know, could not have foreseen it.
Anticipate.
Okay. 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 Well, I'm good with the new stuff. I don't have a problem with it.
It looks like head nods to me, so let's move on to the next item.
Beth, you want to pick up too? Yeah, the next item is the work session polls. And you voted in August to simply require that you all respond in a timely matter when polls are issued. We didn't go a lot further than that. Just wanted to see if, once a poll has been approved, it goes on a list of pending items and then the mayor and city manager set the agenda, so that's all kind of taken into consideration.
Yeah, I've got Alan, then Betty, and then Mike. Alan, then George.
My issue with this was, was in some instances, not everybody responded to the poll, in part because if there's already four, what's the point? It's going to be a work session, right? So, but, and I was a little bit concerned about our participation in the polls and making sure that they, that we get full participation votes to get to four. Do we have very many work sessions that don't get four votes requests?
I would say very few.
Yeah, I can't, I'm trying to think of ones that, I can't even think of one. I guess it's not really so much of a problem that we need to make it a part of our meeting and take time to do that, which is kind of what I was thinking, but I don't think we actually need to do that.
Betty, you're, I'm sorry. You done, Alan? Okay. Betty, you're next.
Thanks. I think it's that everybody should respond, but I don't know how you make them do it. It's not, we don't have, we don't really have a boss. I did, when I was council president, I did call people, I got the list of people who hadn't responded and called them and asked them if they would respond. But I think just sometimes just notifying people you haven't done it yet will bring it in.
Yeah, a reminder.
Because you can forget it in that stack of paper. Like I have sometimes, usually I got mine right away, but I have filled it out and then it gets lost in a stack of paper and doesn't get turned in soon enough. But I do think it's important to follow up and try to get people to turn them in. And I suppose one answer could be don't care, instead of yes or no.
None of the above.
Yeah. I mean, instead, just so that you know you had done it and you weren't wanting to say no. I do think it's important to try to get them all.
Mike, you're next.
I would just like to request, I think you do it already. I'm not certain you always do, but I think you do. But would you issue polls via email each time as well? And I have a fourth item for consideration if we have time.
Don't we do that, or?
George polling?
I think we do, but I'm just, I'm not sure it's a formal.
They usually come in the packet as a hard copy. Yellow sheet, yeah. But we certainly could.
I'm much more likely to respond that way, in a more timely fashion.
And we send reminders via email, so it would make sense.
Yes.
I was just going to say, I think Steph does a good job of gently reminding us that we haven't voted or who has and who hasn't, and given us a tally on it. So now this, this doesn't preclude us from at a work session or a council meeting if someone says, well, I'd like to put out a poll. If we have four councillors at that time saying, yeah, or three others saying, yeah, I agree, we can, this doesn't preclude that from going ahead. Is that correct? It's not necessary. I just want to make that clear.
It could be quicker that way.
It could be.
Chris.
Yeah, I agree. If you've got four councillors that want to do it and you know it, what's the point in going to all the trouble? I agree with that. For me, one of the challenges is I'll get a yellow sheet in my packet and the packet goes into a briefcase or goes under a folder and I lose, I lose track of it. I appreciate the emails a lot, but sometimes emails wind up in spam. I've been amazed at the number of replies from Mike to an email that I never saw in the first place. And I go, wow, I'm reading the reply, but I never saw the original email because it wound up in spam. And so I think you need to have both, just as a safeguard, where you would have the yellow sheet and the, if it's a general reminder that is actually, here's the poll, what's your vote? I think either one of those is fine and either one would work perfectly well. That way you're doubling your chances of getting a response back. And I agree with Betty. I think don't care is an absolutely legitimate choice because there is a number where I don't want to, I don't know whether I should say yes or no. I don't maybe know enough about the issue. Or it's one that I think other people may have a lot more interest than I do. And so I think, maybe don't care isn't really the right word.
Neutral might be a better word.
But I think yes, no, you know, no answer or not. But I think it encourages us to at least respond, which is, I think, the most important part.
I say you'd express something, you'd express something about it by your neutrality.
Neutral, yeah.
You're not against it, but you wouldn't be signing up to say, let's have a work session.
It's kind of like, I'm not against it. I'm neutral on the issue. I think neutral's a legitimate choice.
George polling?
I disagree. I think if we're going to put out a poll, you need to either step up and say, yes, let's discuss it, or no, let's not. I don't think the easy way out is necessarily the right way out. I mean, you may disagree with the topic, but say, yes, let's discuss it. You may say, okay, I think that's a great idea, but I don't want to waste the council's time on it, whatever the topic might be. So I disagree with putting out a neutral position on the poll.
Let's vote on that.
I don't want to.
You're not going to follow my story over it, so it's something.
You have to vote at this table.
Andrea, you're next.
Well, I agree with Chris, George, because there's things that, you know, I don't really know. I mean, and I, the only way I would get to yes or no on some of the things is if you articulated to me exactly what it is you're trying to, trying to accomplish here.
And I think with the new standard of, or new format that we're using on the, on the actual paper document, you're supposed to be doing that. You're supposed to be putting at least enough information to pique your interest to say, yes, I'll talk about it, or no, I don't want to talk about it.
Okay.
I'm neutral on it. I could go with you.
So Andrea, do you have something else you want to say?
No.
No? Mike, you have something else you want to say?
We're not allowed by charter to abstain at this table. And I don't think we should do it on polls either.
Well, that's not, that's not an abstention.
I'm giving you my opinion. It's my opinion. You shouldn't do it there either.
It's a related issue. I understand.
Alan.
But I think it's like abstaining. I don't favor it. I mean, the whole point of the new format was to put the reasons why and the outcomes you wanted to achieve, so you're supposed to ask those questions. I mean, I guess it's incumbent upon all of us, if we put out a work session poll, to go try to sell it to at least four, if not all, of the councillors and explain it. And you could take your three minutes to do that too, put a little pitch in to make sure people do it. But I kind of like, and I don't care, a neutral position is a no vote. Because it's not a yes vote.
But you need four yes votes.
Well, look, the way it's currently here is the format that you fill out with a yes or a no. If you want to change that, you need to make a motion now. Yes.
Well, one thing we could do is just add a category, would like more information. And, you know, staff could then help the person.
I wouldn't worry about it too much. I mean, like somebody mentioned, all of them pretty much are getting approved and so there's enough information for people to decide that, so.
Betty, do you have something you want to say?
I think it would be helpful, I think it's helpful to staff to get them all back. And if you have the option of saying neutral.
Are you putting a motion out there?
Yeah, I move that we have the option, a yes, no, and a neutral option.
Is there a second?
A second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please indicate. Two in favor. All those in opposition?
I thought you were good.
One, two, three, four, five.
I was persuaded.
Jennifer?
All those are.
I have my phone. Six, six opposed goes down. So as far as I understand now, you're back to the way it's set up here. Okay, let's move on to the next item.
I don't really care.
Next item, time for more detailed committee reports. And again, on page 108 at the top, we outline a number of options that could supplement your existing practice, which is twice a month, 20 minutes are scheduled for committee reports, which you've commented seems in terms of time insufficient and also you're not necessarily getting maybe the quality of committee reports that you want from one another. And so we provide some options as well as on pages 115 and 117, some things in your packet that might facilitate committee reports. So we wanted feedback on those.
Alan.
I like the second bullet, which is schedule 130 minute session for general rounds like we do now. It could be 20, 30 minutes. Probably don't stick to 20 minutes or anything, but, because if we do, three minutes each. And then 116 minute session a month with specific updates, with setting a rotation. And Exhibit C has all the different committees are on. And frankly, unless I talk to you one on one about a specific and ask you a specific question, I don't really know what's going on at these other, other things. And I think it would be very helpful for all of us that, to have, once a quarter, to be able to, or so, be able to hear what's going on at these different commissions, all the staying committees that we're assigned to. If we think they're important enough to assign a councillor to, I think we should be able to get, you know, a couple of minute report back once a month about what's happening at the police commissioner, the human rights commissioner, sustainability commissioner, the housing policy board, or whatever. We have like 10 or 12 here. So I'm really in favor of doing that. So I'll move to adopt the second bullet.
You're second?
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded. Do you want to discuss?
Yeah, I do. You know, I, I like that idea, but I think that we should have some flexibility in it. And I think if we put this online, the form that you made, a committee report, either that, you know, when it comes to be our turn, we either fill this out and submit it as part of the council record or give a oral discussion. Because I agree, I don't know what's going on with a lot of the other things. And I feel, I feel kind of bad sometimes when I have a constituent talk to me, say, for instance, about Travel Lane County. You know, like, oh, you know, they, somebody made a mention of it and I just went, oh, you know, I kind of felt like, hmm, you know, I don't really know that much about it. Well, I could have done that, but, you know, I just, you know, I feel like I should know just a little bit about, you know, what the other boards and commissioners. I mean, I've served on some of them, so I kind of get an idea, but just how they work, for instance, and, you know, what their charge is and that kind of stuff, so.
So.
Just a minute.
Was that a friendly to add this?
Yeah. Either or.
I think she's adding this as a friendly. I think that's a good idea.
Either or.
Oh, either or.
Either or, either give an oral presentation or put this, have this online and have it submitted as part of the record.
You take that as a friendly?
So, just to clarify, so if, in this round robin rotation, so if it's your, you're scheduled to have a report, you could just submit this and it'd be in the packet? And you don't need to give an oral report, but people can ask you during this session And you don't need to give an oral report, but people can ask you during this session if they want. Yeah, that works for me, too. It's the information, how we get there.
Who is the second? You were?
I can do it. I'm okay with it.
All right. Chris, you're next.
Yeah. I think the round robin aspect is important, because it would be easy for this many committees to suck up huge amounts of meetings with the report back, so... But I do think the reports we've been getting have been... I've tried to give some, but they are fairly brief, and so I support this with the expectation that this is going to be the basic system, but there may need to be some flexibility occasionally.
Absolutely.
So, I think it's good. It's a good way to get more feedback, so I can go with it.
Betty?
I have reservations about the assigned time. There are times when a particular committee is doing some really interesting or important things, and there are other times when it's just routine, and there's nothing really to say about it. And also, I sort of prefer a time when people could ask us questions about it. I do think that not knowing what the committees are about is something that ought to be remedied. And maybe there could be it, but you wouldn't say that time after time. But if we once maybe told what kinds of things they're doing, and then have a time for questions. But I don't... I wouldn't like to be assigned a particular date if it's a time when the... Like, right now, I could talk a lot about McKenzie-Watershed Council. Maybe two months from now, I won't have anything to say, but I didn't already try to say in three minutes. Thank you.
Alan?
Well, I think Chris actually addressed this, which is, we need to be a little bit flexible. We could swap things out as a go, but I think it's good to have a structure around this so that we do capture all of them, so we don't... It's not haphazard that we have some kind of pattern to this, so that... And for me personally, if I know that I've got the assignment that in this next quarter's meeting, I need to come up with this report, I'm going to do it. If it's voluntary, I ain't going to do it, because I've got a lot of other things to do. So, I think this actually will help us facilitate this communication, with the caveat that we need to be flexible. And I think what we've got is, we've got about, you know, we've got three different ones here, three different time slots for these reports. So, once every couple, four months, so I think that's real helpful, and we can... And there's not that many per report, so if we have 60 minutes, there's going to be time for questions and answering. That's kind of the point of it all. It's just, you know, a short, brief... And if you do, you know, this cheat sheet on top of that, that will prompt people to read it in their packet and then ask questions during the process. You don't have to go through it in so much detail, because you've already done the written report as well, but that's the kind of option.
John?
Just real quickly, if you choose Bullet 2, we would endeavor to schedule something every month. It could be on very infrequently that, for whatever reason, some month it doesn't happen. It could be during a particular season, or there's just a whole lot going on on that. But so, we would endeavor to do that, but...
That's the flexibility.
Right.
Mike?
I was just going to say that if... The flexibility should also be there, that if there... As Betty said, if there was really nothing of consequence that occurred, or that didn't meet, or whatever the case may be, that it's acceptable to file no report if there's really nothing to report.
Kind of like neutral.
I'd also just say, I don't feel compelled to use all the time.
Yeah.
What? That's in our operating agreements.
Use 10 words when 50 will do.
Shall use the time allotted.
So, just a few... Feedback on the form. If you could... When you... Hopefully, you'll put this online in a, like, you know, an attachment. If you could put the Neighborhood Association separate on its own page, because some of us have seven neighborhood associations, and so...
I think we're ready to vote on this.
Question. I assume that the committees frequently change in January. I assume that the names will be changed.
That's true.
That's an article of faith.
Okay. Well, I mean, there's a schedule here that doesn't mean much, because... As far as the name's concerned, that's all.
Okay. All those in favor, please indicate. Four, five, six. Jennifer?
Yes.
Okay. Seven, in opposition. One, it passes. Thank you all very much. Mike, did you have something else you wanted to bring up today?
I'm going to raise it as an issue, but since this is blind and didn't do anything in advance, and I want to respect my friend's no surprises thing, we can discuss it at a future process session, but I want to bring it up for consideration. I'd like us to consider the idea of beginning every formal council meeting on Mondays in the council chambers with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I think that's a good idea.
Okay. Alan?
On the first one that we did, postponing action or work session items at a councillor's request, the action that comes out of there is, staff will avoid suggesting goals and process sessions, as well as certain other topic-specific meetings on councillor's forecast and absence, which is fine, and I think appropriate. The reason this was put on process session, though, and I don't think we fully resolved this, and I'd like to today if we could, was that I'm of the opinion that if a councillor's asked that an item be deferred because they can't be at that session, that we just... That be an automatic deferral unless that action absolutely needs to occur. I don't want to get into the circumstance like we had before, where we're second-guessing other councillor's intent, or what they're doing, or something like that. I think it just should be a courtesy that we all extend to each other, that if someone says they can't be at this meeting, and they think this is an important issue, and it's not time-sensitive, that we could... That it automatically just gets postponed. And so, I would like to move that as a motion.
Moved and seconded. Mike?
There's always the remedy, that someone who feels similarly or wants to respect that can vote in favor and bring it up for reconsideration. And so, there is a remedy that currently exists to that. What I would not want to do is have that then become a way by which we intentionally don't act on something for different reasons other than time. And so, I can't support that idea, because I think the system that we have in place works and gives us the option of, if somebody wants to try to force something through, there's a way to circumvent that. And I don't... I think we generally... I don't think we have a problem with it. I think we generally defer as it is if someone requests that option. I think we all want to respect that. I don't think it should be mandatory, though.
Alan?
I agree that there is a remedy that exists in parliamentary procedure, but it's not a very elegant one. I don't think... I think most... I think almost all of us attend most of the meetings, so I don't see us using that tool to stall or postpone things. But I do think that, instead of an informal practice, that we make it a formal practice, that that be granted unless there's a time-sensitive nature to the issue.
Betty?
I can't imagine someone deliberately missing a meeting to avoid having a vote, which is... And also, Mike's scheme would require partner in crime.
My scheme?
Okay. Glenn has some.
I have a question. Whose decision is it going to be that something is time-sensitive? Is it the mayor asking the city manager? Is it the council voting on whether it's time-sensitive? Because if you're going to reach this agreement, I have no doubt that the first time there's a controversy, you're going to turn to me and say...
Is that time-sensitive?
Well, that's not the question, but can the council move forward or not?
So, Chris, you had your hand up.
Well, I can understand the problem that you're trying to solve. I am wanting to try to say, what we've gotten to so far maybe is sufficient, so what I would want to do is try out what we've got so far before I move to the next step, which is trying to create something formal, because I'm worried that can create a problem... Other problems. Glenn just got done saying one. So, I agree, we need to make sure we're very diligent, and we're very careful, and we're very thoughtful, and we don't abuse it in either direction, but I'm not quite ready to go the full formal step yet. We may get there at some later point.
Betty?
I think it's... I don't see what's wrong with going the formal step. I think it's really needed, and it prevents people from voting on something when the person who's on the other side isn't there. It makes it more difficult for them to do that.
Other side?
The other side of the issue, Mike.
The issue.
I just want to say this, that if this ends... This is your processes, so if this ends up four to four, I'm not solving this one for you. Okay? So, I'm just letting you know that.
Neutral.
So, I think the deadline question is a good one, and I think it can be fairly easily solved. I think what I meant by that in time-sensitive, if there is a deadline, say, a grant has to be in by the 31st and is the last meeting before that period of time, and if we postponed it to the next meeting, it would make the point moot, because the deadline passed, that to me would be time-sensitive. Most of the things that we do are not time-sensitive. Very infrequently are they time-sensitive, but sometimes they are, because they have specific deadlines, either because of some rule or imposed deadline from a third party. So, I think that's an easy way to solve it, and that's what I meant by time-sensitive.
I've got Mike and then Andrea. Mike?
One of the things I really enjoy about the last two years is that I think this particular council at the table has done a wonderful job to work more accommodatingly together. I think we've done a better job of being civil and collegial with one another and trying to accommodate one another even when we disagree about something, and I anticipate the next couple of years being the same way. That said, I can also, if we put this into process session, see someone using that differently, because a deadline may be a deadline with regard to some legal thing, but there are oftentimes political deadlines, or a political outcome may be achieved by stalling something that isn't necessarily what everyone at the table would consider a deadline, but would still accomplish a political end. And I'm uncomfortable with that being used in that way at a future point, so I'm... Like Chris, I think, inelegant as you may find our current solution to that, I think it presents other problems to go this next step, and so I can't go there yet.
Andrea?
Mike actually said some of the stuff that I was thinking. I feel like we have a pretty good relationship. I think people are pretty open and honest with each other. I don't like to second-guess intent. I don't think people are here out of, you know, anything but goodwill, so I would hope that we could just continue this conversation. And, you know, I don't know that I feel like we need a formal process. I just am not sold on it.
Okay. I think we're... You're ready to vote on the motion. All those in favor, please indicate. One, two, three. All those in opposition? One, two, three, four.